And welcome. This is Sebastian here for Eric Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Beth Mitchell. I'm the President of the Chamber, representing the Board of Directors. We'd like to welcome our participants tonight. I'd like to thank the Felsmayr City Council for giving us the opportunity to hold the forum here in this beautiful auditorium. We'd also like to thank the candidates, not only for participating in the forum, but also for making it into the community by deciding to run for a City Council seat. Before I introduce our moderator, I'd like to introduce each one of the candidates. And in alphabetical order, we have four candidates who are seeking one of three positions on City Council for a two-year term. As voters, you will be selecting three of these candidates. Mr. Michael Barone is not here tonight, so if he does decide to join us sometime in the evening, we'll invite him up on stage and we'll save his questions for him. Next introduced is Mr. Fernando Herrera. He's currently the Mayor of Proton, the City of Felsmayr, seeking his...
Eleven years.
Eleven years. Okay. And sitting next to him is Jessica Salgada. She's new to the political scene, and she starts seeking her first term as a Council member. And then finally, Joel Tyson, who is currently the Vice Mayor, although he has served as the Mayor and the Mayor of Proton and several other positions.
Dog catcher.
Dog catcher.
Whatever.
Joel, how long have you been serving the city?
I don't know. I can't remember. First, I elected in 98, and then, let's say, I was out there for one year. I resigned, ran for mayor, mayor for two years, and then I was out for a year, and then I came back in for two years, and then I was out for another year. So off and on since 98 is about the easiest way to live. Actually, Fernando is the longest continuous servant. He's had to interrupt.
Okay.
So I make a mad of him while I pay out of that.
But he's in the lab. Luckily, he has served more than he had made of us.
Okay. All right. Well, this forum is sponsored by the Chamber, and it's another example of our service to our communities. We provide an opportunity for exchange of information for the benefit of the voters. And here's how the forum is going to work. The candidates have chosen numbers, and they're actually seated in the right order, and that will determine who goes first. We have a set of questions for each candidate. But before we give them their questions, we're going to give them two minutes for opening statements. Then each candidate will have their own set of questions, and then after that, we'll have another two minutes for closing statements. I'd also like to introduce our timekeeper for the evening, Maggie. Sammyn's Maggie. Maggie is the owner-operator of Custom Air Systems here in Felsmayr, and she's also a longtime Chamber of Board Member. Maggie has two paddles. Ready? One that shows you have 30 seconds left in time, and then the red one, which means that your time is up. Do you have any questions? No? All right. Let me bring our moderator for the evening up, Mr. Teresa Tol. Teresa is the owner-operator of Bay Street Pharmacy, I'm Rosalind. She's a Vice Chair of the Sebastian Chamber. She's also the Chair of our Legislative Government Affairs Committee. So please, happy welcome, Teresa.
Thank you very much. It's an honor for me to be here, and I too. I love the building and the auditorium. It's beautiful. So are you guys ready to get started?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Herrera, two minutes for an opening statement, please.
Okay. Well, my name is Fernando Herrera. I've been here City Council 11 years. Been here a resident for 42 years. And I love Felsmayr. I was only 15 years when I came here until I moved here. So I love Cityville, and I love the people. We make important things. I love to keep our citizens with a lot of respect and a community.
Okay. Jessica, or Mrs. Salgada.
Well, my name is Jessica Salgada. I've been living... Sorry, I'm just a little sick today, so I can't speak that much. But I've been living in the city for 10 years. This is like my first year running for City Council. I'm newly, so everything's new to me. I'm learning everything, so we all answer the question just as fast as possible.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Tyson.
In the forum, my Saturday night, the lady asked me, she said, "Have you been on there a long time? I come here once, I'm serving." And I told her about a guy that was on school board. He was there for 17 years. He said he had unfinished business. And I thought, "Look, you can't finish it in 17 years. Then you need to give it up." But I don't have any unfinished business. I think we've done well, finishing most of our projects and so forth. But we do have some ongoing, what we call work in progress, projects that are coming online, that the Elephant, the National Elephant Center is one. We're trying to bring in the natural gas pipeline is another thing, which will trigger the shrimp farm, the aquaculture project out west of town. We've got the Dollar General store coming in, and there's a possibility of another restaurant opening with a retail space. So these are ongoing things, and I think those are all good things for the city. And we have a good team. Right now, with the Council, we work well together. We work well with Jason. I think everybody respects the duties of our staff. They're supervised by Jason. We don't get involved in the day-to-day operation. So I just would like to keep things rolling. If you have faith in me, although I'm 80 years old, I think I still have enough energy to keep on the program. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. So the second part of our forum, each candidate will get five questions, and you have two minutes each to answer those. Mr. Herrera, technically, you're candidate number two, so you're going to get the questions that were randomly assigned to candidate number two. Okay?
Okay.
So here we go. Question number one, please provide a list of prior already issues that you feel the city should focus on.
Well, I'd like to see more fields where soccer, the children's soccer field, I'd like to see that. We have future to afford. And how we have this level we have right now, I don't know, the kind of hurdles and that, and that's one of the problems. But we've been moving forward with the kind of big ones, fields, for the community. But that's one area that we don't. And I'd like to do other things, like the veterans, senior citizens, some of the facilities for them all day, so that way they can gather together and just enjoy the day. That's my obvious problem.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. All right. Number two, in your role as City Council member, what do you think your biggest contribution will be to this community?
Like what, you might give more details for this.
So how have you helped the commi... I mean, you've been serving, we've already heard, a lot of this to continue us. So what have you done to help, or what will you continue to do to make Felsmayr a better place?
Well, I go to the residents, people, sometimes they got issues or concerns, but they want to come to the City Council and bring their judgment. A lot of times, people are not going. I always share with them, listen, you have the right to come to the City Council, open your opinion. A lot of times, you don't need to do that. You just go to the City Manager or the Mayor, and get some answers, and the problem is solved. And that's the way it works. There was one time when they were gathering on a water issue, they were concerned the water wasn't that great. And I share with them, hey, we want them to build water, it's going to be solved. You don't have to go, but you have the right to go. And they said, "No, okay." Then the problem is solved. And I share that with them all the time. They don't think I can help, and I will continue to help them. A lot of things, there's something personal, and I don't have that power to help them solve the problem, move along, and that's it. I share with them all. The issue they have, which I'm going to be able to...
All right. Thank you. How is the volume out there? You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I need to make them speak out a little more.
No.
Okay. So now that I don't want you to look at me?
No, that's fine. Okay, that's fine.
I think I should have you address your citizenry and just speak on.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that you can hear me.
Yes. No, that's good.
All right. So they make him repeat the answer.
Then I gotta get ready.
Okay. So question number three, many cities around our nation are going bankrupt because they cannot handle their employee benefit obligations. What plan do you have for the future to ensure that salaries, benefits, and retirement plans of city employees do not overburden the budget of the city's taxpayers?
Well, we have a wonderful staff received, Larry Neighbors, he does a great job on a good job. I think that Larry Neighbors is doing a good job for the city. He's staying focused on his work. He does a great job. I don't think we're going to have that problem. By him being with us, I don't think we're going to have that problem.
Okay. All right. Question number four, can you explain the difference between a strong mayor form of government and a city manager form of government, and which one works best and why?
Well, the city manager, we have a city manager today. He's been helping for about seven years. And having a mayor, a strong mayor, if it works as a team, we can be very successful, which we have. There's, I know there's differences, but the city manager that we have today, he's staying top on the work. And a lot of us, we have this mayor, Susan Hammond has done a good job too, she stays on top there. And I know myself, a lot of times, the same question. But I could put it this way. Jason has done a lot of fund, grants given from the state, and that's why we are today, the grants we've been giving for the city. If it wasn't for that, how could we be, the city wouldn't be that good. We won't be over that many grants we've been given.
Okay. Good job. All right. And then the final question for you. How would you balance commercial development while maintaining the historical feel of Felsmayr?
It's a good one. I'm going to answer that one.
So commercial development versus historical, how do you keep both in balance, or how do you keep both?
I'll have to pass it down. I'll pass it down.
Okay. You're going to pass it down?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So you're through with your questions?
Yes.
Your last part will be your closing statement. Okay? And we'll get there after I go through the others. All right. Ms. Salgada, question number one, what do you feel is the biggest weakness in the current City Council that you hope to change by being elected?
I haven't seen a weakness right now because they've done a great job. I've seen the projects that have worked well with Susan, so I don't think I see any weaknesses right now. Just I mean, maybe grow, but no need.
No need. Okay. Question number two, in business, a financial statement includes revenue and expense information. Can you list the different sources of revenue that the City of Felsmayr receives?
Right now, I don't have any sense of that because I'm not really into everything. I'm a lot, so I'll...
Okay. Question number three, you'll be able to answer this. What issues motivated you to run for this office, and what do you plan to accomplish during your term?
What motivated me is, I think that it was time for the Jetmax generation to step up, to step up for, you know, to see what they want in the city for the future. And I think that one of the things that I would love to see here in the city would be more things for the kids, for the youth, so that way they can have more activities and, you know, they're not in the streets. And something that families can together do, like, for instance, like having gardens, that way, you know, they can, the kids can learn and do everything, and the parents can, you know, it's a family orientation, so.
Okay. Question number four, how would you define going green, and how should Felsmayr address this issue? So basically, recycling, that type of stuff.
Well, I think that we do a lot of recycling, a lot of recycling, so that would be one way. There's different ideas of, you know, having like gardens. I think that one thing would be like filming their vegetables, or having like their farm with their animals, that would be one way. And that way, the people get more into it, get involved.
Okay. And one thing I forgot to mention is, at the end in your closing statement, there's a question that somebody else got that you think I agree answered. Feel free to address that in your closing statement as well. And then finally, your final question, number five, are you satisfied with the redevelopment efforts in the city's CRA district, and what further improvements would you like to see the city accomplish?
I think so far, we're going in a good direction as to what we want to see in the future for the city, so, I mean, we're getting there, so.
Okay. And any goals for the future?
I think more recreational things.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to candidate number four, Mr. Tyson. Your first question, why are you the right person to address the difficult economic challenges that face the city?
I don't think we've got any difficult economic challenges. Firstly, we've done very well, but actually, we were kind of coasting along now on our the development feed from Sunag, and we've annexed them a few years back, and then with the grants that Jason gets, we're able to pave the streets. We're applying for a grant to put the gas line out to the industrial park. We've been very, very fortunate in getting the grants to help us. I think, well, we're doing so well that I think we were the only city in the county that gave our employees payrolls and so forth. Personally, we're having any economic... We may, starting next year, things will pick up during the year.
Okay. Question number two, how would you encourage redevelopment in the Old Town District?
I think what we need to do is advertise the fact that we have, we've zoned that as an Old Town District, that they can't come in and build any modern structures, it has to conform with the style that's already there. There's land that's available there, and there again, if we get the hotel open, that's going to be a step in the right direction. I know that yesterday, I was talking to Stan Disch, who owns the old Post Office building. He's putting an antique store in. And I think some of the things that we need in there to enhance the Old Town District is maybe have, if somebody would open like an ice cream parlor, or a candles factory and things. There's a town over in the center of the state called Lake Placid, and they've done things like that. And they brought back, actually, their old town, they brought it back alive by doing, by people coming in and taking a chance to do it. Of course, that was back during the time that the economic boom was going on, and they were able to do it. So there again, these are some ideas that we need to keep on the back burner, so that when the economy does pick back up, we can promote those types of activities.
Okay. Thank you. Number three, what are the issues and projects that the cities of Sebastian and Felsmayr have in common, and how should they work together on these issues?
Well, one of the issues is the gas line coming in. I was invited to go over to a meeting there, but it's probably been three years ago, where they were talking about converting their vehicles over to natural gas. And they were talking about, Slatch, they were talking about converting a natural gas pipeline with possibly a filling station out about County Road 510, where Felsmayr and the City of Sebastian could share that. So to me, that right now, that is the biggest mutual project that we both depend upon.
Okay. Question number four, do you have any ideas on how the city's economic development plan should be implemented?
I'm not a voice.
Okay. That's my idea, why?
You don't have me on time to do you.
You want me to read the question again?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any ideas on how the city's economic development plan should be implemented?
Well, I think one of the things is working with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Economic Development Council, to shoot ideas through them. We need to work with our business people, the business community. Also getting input from citizens. This is one of the things, the most frustrating about this job is that we have very little input from our citizens. We have workshops, we have a budget workshop, and nobody shows up. You know, we make these decisions on our own. So we're, we kind of run these things out, we discuss them at workshops, and it's kind of up to the Council to make a decision on what's the best route to take. But we're moving on. I think with the Dollar General store and the restaurant coming in, we get the hotel open, those things are all going to trigger our economic development. I think things will kind of piggyback on those.
Okay. Great. And then the final question for you is, why do you want to serve on the City Council?
Oh, that's great. One of the things is that I think that I bring that these other folks can't, they're working, and I'm retired, and I'm still have, my mind is still active, I've still got a brain that I can use. And I enjoy it. I enjoy serving the community. I think we've done a lot of great things over the past 10 or 12 years. But I'm able to go to various council meetings. I represent the City of the Beach and Jours Restoration. I go to the Council of Local Governments down at Warke Pierce, that's a monthly meeting. I go to the Treasure Coast League of Cities, that's Monteverde, which is comprised of all of the government officials. The Treasure Coast League of Cities is just the cities within Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, Okeechobee County. And these are great people we work with. These are the mayors and the City Council people. The Council of Local Governments is also comprised of the County Commission and school board members. And we also have associate members like Florida Power Light, AT&amp;T, Waste Pro, Waste Management. So we get a lot of great ideas from networking with all these other people, and I can bring that back to the city. But I just, I really enjoy it. I've been around here long enough, just the historic value of having served. I know the projects they have started, and what we are with, and our vision for the future.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. You guys did a great job. And now you get to conclude. So we've kind of zipped through tonight. Unless you want to throw any surprise questions, you have those extra questions if you want to. Do you all want to ask your question?
I would like to address some of the questions that you had before, like the difference between a strong mayor and a city manager form of government. Can I do that?
Yeah. I think we've got plenty of time. You guys okay with that? Yeah, we've got plenty of time. Please do that.
Well, when I first got on the Council, we had a strong mayor, and Felsmayr was just sort of beginning to grow. We had, during that period of time, we annexed the, what they call 3,500 acres of Ensign property. They were talking about an industrial development and residential housing out there, it's up in possibly 5,000 houses. And that was going to be a huge thing to manage, because in our development agreement, we had them to say if the county could not furnish water and sewer services, that the developer would put those facilities in, and then deep them over to the city to operate. Well, during that time, I could see that we didn't have the expertise to do that. When I got elected to mayor, I was kind of told that I had to fire everybody in City Hall. You know, I was mandated to do that, to get rid of everybody in City Hall. Well, it took me about 15 minutes to realize I could not fire everybody in City Hall, because I didn't have a clue as to what I was supposed to do. Fortunately, we had John Little, who had been the city manager in Vero Beach for 25 years, and he kind of took me under his wing. And I learned how to be a mayor. But one of the things that I realized is that we needed some professionalism. So John and I, let's say, the mayor, when he came back, he beat me by 10 votes and took back over again. I was out of a job, and then he fired John. So John and I got together, and we said we need a city manager form of government. So we took the city charter from Vero Beach and Felsmayr, and took the best parts of both of those, and got it together, and we rewrote the charter and workshopped it. We came up with, I think there was 18 amendments to the charter, all of them passed except one. We had, there was one that did not pass, and I couldn't even remember what it is now. But it passed by a margin of 77 percent from the citizens. And then we hired Jason, and the rest is history, and that's just the best thing that's ever happened, I think. I tell people that Jason drove us kicking and screaming into the 21st century, really. And it's just, we were so fortunate to have somebody of his ability and knowledge. He works constantly at it. He's out and about, he's well-respected throughout the county. So that's the difference between, when we had our strong mayor, nobody went to the county meetings, we were not represented down there. They made sure that it was on some of the tax revenue. They were doing all kinds of things, but what is down there is different. Anyhow, I'm glad I had an opportunity to explain them.
Okay. Me too. That's great. Any addresses you want to address, any other questions that you have?
Yeah, one of the things that Joe mentioned about your audience, I feel that they trust in us. I feel strongly that the city, as a council, they trust us, and I think they are a compliment. A lot of ways, they can come, they work, they can do the right thing for us.
I'm reading the questions to see if I want to throw one to each of you. I'll throw this out to each of you and see if you want to answer it, and it'll be the same question to each. So to create a balanced budget for the city, what services would you reduce or taxes would you increase? And Mr. Tyson, I'll start with you. You've actually already addressed that you feel like the city's in good financial shape, but I don't know a lot about the City of Felsmayr personally, so maybe you can address if there are any services that you're concerned about, or rate increases in taxes that you see coming.
There's a couple things, and we may be faced with that next year. If the economy doesn't turn around and we don't start getting more tax revenues in, then we may have to make some cuts. But I think if we were going to increase any taxes, I would probably start with the communication tax, that's one. And our utility taxes, we've maxed out on utility taxes, but we would have to look at the, any services that we give out, or the similar and so forth. Those would have to come through a bit. And then, of course, we might have to address the Ad-Or, that's our cheap store equity, which is tax on property, property taxes. So those are the ones that I would have, where to kind of tinker around with and see. I hold it to a minimum, but if you sprint it out over all of the property owners in the city, then it's kind of spread everybody, rather than increase. The only other thing that we might do is contract out the, like Public Works. We could talk about doing that certain year ago, to have Fernando bringing along here so we can, and take care of that next year.
Okay. Ms. Salgada, anything you can respond to that? Mr. Herrera?
I would have to pass it down. With regard to taxes, you've got to be careful today. I read I sit down with someone who has this experience, and I'd love to get more of the data.
Okay. No problem. Well, I'll ask one final question that's on here, and I'll leave it up to you. Obviously, these are additional questions you weren't anticipating, so. What do you think is the most significant challenge to the business community of Felsmayr, and what can the city do to help that? Any of you want to add?
Should I say that again?
The most significant challenge to the business community here in Felsmayr, and what can the city do to help that? what can the city do to help that?
When it comes to money, if all the businesses are hurting, even though I have a business myself too, sometimes you have to go a little harder just to maintain the business. And we're doing it right now, the business, they just have to go a little harder and see what the economy will do down the road. Yeah, that's what I look at. I know it's hard for everyone, and I just feel, people are going to work, just to get a job, they have the budget and everything. So to answer that, that's a tough one. Because the economy, that's people are, when Citrus was here, back in the eighties, Citrus was one of the best, big job, and we had worked for everybody, everybody had a good job. As Citrus going down, in that time, the county...
Ms. Salada?
I think trying to open a business is a challenge, because you have to have certain money to start from the beginning and get it set up to, or, you know, for anybody, but with the economy, it's very hard.
Do you think that the city has a role? Do you have any ideas about anything the city can do to help with that?
I mean, I didn't, it's gonna help, I don't know what we get, but I mean...
You'll be learning.
Yes.
Mr. Tyson?
Well, one of the things that we did a couple years ago, when we had the first urban community development agency, was we gave grants to enhance their number signings, landscaping, paint their buildings, over there to do that. But of course now, with the reduction in revenue, that's, we've about bankrupted our CRA fund, so we can get that built back up, and so we kind of put that on hold for the year. That's the biggest thing that I'm aware of, other than maybe with occupation license and things of that sort, that could reduce some of those, or encourage, in respect of things.
Okay. All right, well, now I'll stop teasing you, and I'll let you close. So, Mr. Herrera, you have two minutes to make a closing statement.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for coming out here. I was the councilman, resident of Felsmere. I want to say thank you for coming out here and your support. The Chamber Commerce, I want to thank you also for your support for a lot of time. As a councilman, I'd like to continue being a councilman for the city of Felsmere. I love the people, and as long as I get voted in, that you have, I'm continuing to do my best for our city, for residents. And I always mention that if I'm gonna stay focused and respect on every resident in this community, we can go a long way. And as a councilman, we work as a team, we have a wonderful city staff, and if we continue doing what we do, we'll clearly be very successful in our city of Felsmere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. All right, Ms. Salada?
I want to thank everybody here for coming and taking the time to listen to us. And also, I'm new, like everybody knows. So hopefully, if I do get elected, I'll learn more about the city and everything, and hear what everybody has to say, and try to see, work with, you know, the citizens here to try and make it better for the city.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Tyson?
Okay, again, I'd like to be of the candidates, I thank you for coming out tonight, stormy weather and all, so. I'd like to continue serving. I had said a few years ago that by the time I turned eighty, I would probably be dozing off at the council chambers, and somebody would have to wake me up, but that hasn't happened. Like I said before, I've got the time to devote to the outside things, as well as come to the county, to the city council meetings and the workshops, and participate. I stay in close contact with Jason and with the city clerk, try to stay up on what's going on. And I still think I have some things to offer, and I would like to be able to continue on for two to four more years, and move the city forward. That's our goal, and I think that's the goal of everybody, so. I would appreciate your support, and again, thank you for coming out. Tricia, thank you.
Oh, it was fun. I hope I get invited back. Okay, so our candidates' forum is concluded. I want to thank our Chamber Commerce and Beth Mitchell, our president, for hosting it, and also thank you to my committee that isn't here tonight, but the Legislative Government Affairs Committee of the chamber, who helped write some of the questions, and I think we have some input from Beth on those as well, she's a resident in New York City. And we urge you guys to vote on the number six, if not before, with early voting and absentee voting, and all those things that you can do these days. And we just thank you for being here tonight. Good night. Yep. Wonderful time paper, Maggie.